Let's go ahead and get started, see if we can get out of here fairly quickly. Uh, we're looking at the time and I think it's uh five thirty-two. I'm gonna establish a uh quorum. Mr. Morris is here, Commissioner Magnus is here, Mr. Wallace is here. Uh, we will see if uh Mr. Shumpaw uh comes in. Uh, with that being said, we've established a quorum. It's opportunities now for public comment. Does anybody have anything they want to say?
That's why I handed it out.
Okay, you didn't wanna address this? Would you like to go over this?
I'll let you read it.
She's gonna talk on.
Want me to read it for you?
All right. Public comment, going, going, gone, okay. Let's move on to uh agenda item number three. Discussion, consideration, and action to approve the minutes from September twelfth, twenty twenty-four's regular meeting. I'm assuming everybody's had an opportunity to look these over and I'd like to thank Melinda Allison for her uh three minutes. Thank you ma'am. Anybody have any comments, corrections? She didn't misspell my name, I don't know about anybody else.
She misspelled mine, but that's happened before, so that's all right. I make a motion we approve the minutes as with the exception of the change in my name spelling, other than that, I'm fine with it.
Okay, Jaylene?
Yeah, I've been called work.
Okay, now, being said, we've got a motion by Commissioner Wallace. Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a second by Commissioner Magnus. Uh, if there are no further questions, let's go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say nay. Uh, Commissioner Magnus?
Aye.
Commissioner Wallace?
Aye.
Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Chair says aye, motion passes.
I just might say, sometimes you get what you pay for.
I saw, I say it's been a lot worse, I promise you.
Okay, let's go on to agenda item number four, discussion, consideration, and action to approve setting a hearing to hear comments regarding removal of section point zero-one on-site sewage facilities OSSF from the Lake Ralph Hall zoning regulations. Do we wanna set a hearing on this at this time?
It's up to you guys, if you wanna table it again, we'll table it, if you wanna set a hearing, we'll set a hearing.
Well, my, my question is, how much uh movement do we have going on as far as development? If we don't have anything out there perking, we could probably table it a little while longer. I would like to see some more water studies. Here's, here's the problem for me. Uh, if we have uh requirements of this type, we are going to have smaller uh development is and more dense development. Uh, lot size, if you're a developer and you've gotta pay for a package plant, you're gonna have to sell more property, and if you've got two hundred acres, the way you sell more property is divided into a bunch of different small lots, and that can have effect on the development around here and squeeze the rural nature. Now, I also understand that uh the uh opportunity is concerned about water quality. And at this point in time, I do not have enough information to make a decision one way or the other. I'd like, when people talk to me about green energy, windmills and solar uh farms, uh, my, my feeling is, I don't know if green energy's better than carbon, but I do know I don't want a big uh, you know, eight-hundred-foot uh wind turbine near my property. That's pretty easy. If they wanna put them out in Abilene, that's good. If they wanna put them out in the middle of Marfa, that's good. But I don't particularly wanna see them, and I, I've got one friend who lives down near that uh uh solar farm, and he tells me it gives off a, the noise all the time, uh like an icebox or something, and I don't think I would wanna live next to that either. But as far as uh, you know, putting in these package plants is concerned, it, it comes into a question of density and uh it probably cuts both ways. If you're gonna have, uh rather than forty houses, you're gonna have two hundred. Uh, I think it puts more strain on the county to have two hundred. If people don't build because of it and we maintain the rural nature, that isn't bad either. But I, I, I don't have enough information to get a clear uh set of facts that I could make a decision on at this time. So I, I think if we don't have uh any pressure for development, we can probably table it and wait till we have some people's more information to look at. Plus, I've got a bunch of other things I've got on my priority list, but uh that, that development around the lake is important to me and we wanna do what's best.
What kinda timeframe are we thinking about getting more information on that? I mean, I know we can keep table it and keep table it, but I think we need to set some kinda reasonable timeframe.
Well, let's, let's look at uh, Mr. Janeway, you've sent me one report from a, a PhD that had some language in it, and I've uh looked at some articles and they seem to have mixed statements about what's going on. Uh, do you think you could have your guy come and tell us about what's wrong with the concept of uh having uh how the package plant, not having a package plant would be bad for the lake? Could we possibly put that together?
Uh, we could certainly address those. I think it's uh, for us, there's a, it's kind of a holistic approach uh to that. We had Jacobus Engineering is who put our uh, they're, they've actually been involved in the lake for a long time, very familiar with the soil conditions in this area, and they're the ones that put together that uh study based on the zoning and that. And so, they have that, that's not a PhD, maybe a PhD, but they're engineers.
They're probably, they're probably several questions I would have for them. And we may want them, if they can't come here in person, maybe come here in Zoom. I don't know if we can set that up. And then we could have a discussion with them and get our questions answered, and then we could make a meaningful decision on what direction we want to move in. And I, I think I would ask you, Mr. Janeway, if you could talk to them about presenting to us and answering questions. And we can do that maybe next meeting to set uh?
Uh, you know, I, I think I may be traveling unfortunately.
Okay, well, let it, let us?
You're not available for the next meeting either.
Okay, well, then we need, it can't be the next meeting. And we may not wanna do the next meeting if we don't have anything else on the event horizon.
Yeah, at least let me know that your availability would probably not be till a Tuesday, November the nineteenth.
How does that sound for everybody?
But that would be a Tuesday.
Tuesday the nineteenth, that should work for me.
Or either that, or we just put it all the way back into December if we're not ready yet.
I don't even want my calendar up here, it's, we got no service.
Now, why don't you get with uh Mr. Janeway and get with Lisa and we can get word out. Mr. Janeway, if you'll give us several dates that you're available, we'll go ahead and get that uh set up.
But I mean, that's, that would be the, the public hearing would be the place to listen to all the information, I believe. So, I mean, it depends, do you want to wait till December, then set a public hearing in January? Cause that would be the normal way we would do it.
I, I think that this could be, I would put the public hearing in front of this meeting or in the back of this meeting, and we'll just make it one meeting. And then we can, if we put it in front, that we can consider uh it during our uh general meeting.
Well, I, I would have thought that the um public hearing would be the place to present all of the information.
Yeah, just have it, have it first.
Yeah.
Have the hearing first and the meeting afterwards.
And so, if you wanted to go ahead and, and, and set a public hearing right now, we can, and you can do it in December, January?
Well, I would like to do it sooner than later, and I think?
You just have to give me enough time to put it in the paper.
Okay, uh, Mr. Janeway, if you will check that date for us and get back with us on it.
Okay.
I get with Di and we'll uh move forward on that. I think that there is something wrong if we continually kick the can down the road. It makes us look indecisive, and that may be indecisive, but I don't wanna look that way.
It's, it's been well over a year.
Does uh, does TCEQ oversee the OSSFs?
Yes.
For the county? Would it be beneficial to have somebody from TCEQ come and explain that a little bit more?
They probably wouldn't.
They probably wouldn't?
So, Fannin County is an authorized agent, and Fannin County has a designated representative that also represents TCEQ.
And that is you, right, okay.
So, we got that.
So, we'll have, we'll have Di here to?
What is the date that you think might work?
Uh, well, it depends what month you wanna do this. If you want to wait all the way until December, if we, if it's, we're struggling for November, that gives Doug a bit more of an idea of when he might have it instead of rushing. Um, so normally, we would have it probably what, on December the thirteenth?
As long as it's not a Friday.
Not a Friday, December the twelfth.
We could do it on, we could do it on the thirteenth.
December the twelfth would be the Thursday.
I don't wanna travel the twelfth, my daughter's graduating from college, so I, I know I won't be here that day.
Um, so if you, if you want and you just wanna keep it scheduled on the meetings, then the next would be, we would either have to go to December the nineteenth, and then we're getting close to Christmas, or we can, or we can go all the way through to January, and it would be January the ninth.
What about the November?
We can't, I don't think we can do it in November, um, with me being able to get to do a public hearing, I had to get it to the paper, and the paper deadline used to be a Thursday, now my paper deadline is Wednesday, so it was yesterday.
Yeah, so I, let's, let's go ahead. Uh, Mr. Janeway, if you'll look into that for us and get back with Di, and she can track with us to see when we'll be available, and we will hold off then on setting a meeting date, if that's all right, gentlemen, till uh we, we hear back and, and know when we're going to do it. Yeah, I, I think that's the only big thing we have sitting on our agenda right now. We don't have any uh developments coming in and asking for any sort of relief. Okay, let's move on, assuming there's no further discussion on that, we're gonna pass on that. Let's move on and have discussion and possible action regarding Lake Ralph Hall zoning members. And let me tell you where the Commissioners Court ended up on that. Uh, we had the mayor uh come in, uh and the mayor from Ladonia uh indicated that he understood that the uh city council had the right to uh designate the representative. I think they've got that right when a, a term is up. I think we've gone through this drill previously, and Mr. Morris will stay in position until January, and then we can take a look and see who's going to be on the uh, on the commission. I think that we're looking, Commissioner Magnus is stepping down, and I think uh there needs to be the Commissioner from Precinct Three on the board, and that would mean that we would have, you know, Kurt Fogelberg taking that position. So, that's uh where we are on that. As far as other positions are concerned, we probably need to scratch our heads and see who wants to continue to serve. I like continuity. I think it, it's helpful that everybody knows where we are. Uh, it's uh, trouble with uh the way our popular government runs is we don't have a lot of uh historical memory. We have people come in and they don't know what they're doing, and it takes them six months to learn what they're doing. And I, I can tell you, I had that experience. You end up as county judge and it's like you're in a jet airplane at thirty-five thousand feet and they hand you a manual and uh say good luck and they jump out. So, uh, I wanna make sure people have an idea about what's going on in the community and that they have a sense of where the commission is heading and what it's, the work it's been working on. And I, I wanna uh tell Mr. Morris that we appreciate his effort and his work, and we'll see if we can find a spot for him. Okay? Uh, that's the discussion on that. And I, we received a petition of all the people think you're doing a good job. I myself will, if, I'd asked to sign the petition, I probably would have signed it also indicating you've done a good job, and we, we appreciate you. Uh, and uh, we, I think the Commissioners Court is the body that decides who's on this commission, and I think that was decided last Tuesday, if my memory serves me. I haven't seen the minutes yet, so I can't be sure. All that said, let's move on to uh?
Quick question, if we need to have other members replaced, then do we need to have a meeting in November?
Oh, we, I think it might uh not hurt to have one in November, December. I think uh the way the language that I looked at it was talking about uh Mr. Wallace and Mr. Shumpaw coming up for consideration in two thousand and five. Now, it doesn't say when in two thousand and five, it could be at the end of two thousand and five. Yeah, twenty, excuse me, two thousand and twenty-five, I'm twenty years off. That's part of the Hades of getting old. Uh, your concept of time, you know, five years is a minute, so that, that aside, let's uh it probably needs something in December for sure, simply because we're going to, and we may not have to do anything in December because uh these appointments are going to be made at the Commissioners Court. So, what I, I basically need to hear from uh Mr. Wallace and Mr. Shumpaw is, you know, sometime in twenty-five that they wanna stay on, and uh Commissioner Magnus has already indicated that he is going to uh ride off into the sunset, and uh that leaves us with the question of whether Mr. Fogelberg wants to step up and fill that position. But our original concept is we wanted the Commissioner from Precinct Three to be on the, on the commission, and we wanted people who live in this area, and I'm talking about in the, in the lake area, to be on the commission. You gotta have a vested interest uh to give up your free time. We, I, I and Commissioner Magnus are being paid, unlike the rest of you gentlemen.
Well, like, you know, I, I think, I think it's necessary to have the commissioner, you know, to be involved in what all's going on, so I, I just think it's the right thing to do for me to step down and let uh Kirk Fogelberg have to have, have my spot.
Then if anybody wants to comment about what we're doing, we're delighted to hear comments. I'd rather uh have somebody ask me a question and say, oh, better not step out there, than have them not ask a question and laugh when I fall through the heist, so. But no bad questions, just bad answers. Yes, sir?
Um, at the last city council meeting in Ladonia, uh?
Could you, could you state your name and address?
Yes, sir, my name's Russell Duckworth, two O two Bottom Street here in Ladonia. Uh, the mayor and the city council voted unanimously to appoint me Mr. Morris's seat beginning in twenty twenty-five. So, I just wanted to make sure that you knew that I was here in present.
Well, very, very good.
Present, paying attention, ready to take up those responsibilities.
I've now put a face with a name, and I may not remember your name, but I'll remember your face unless you get a lot older.
Well, hopefully it'll be in the minutes and it will be spelled correctly. You're not the only one that's been victimized.
Well, very, very good, I appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.
Um, any other uh comments on this issue? Yes, sir?
Uh, Jason Egan, I was there in Ladonia as well. So, you're, there may be two seats available, is that what you're saying?
What I would uh prefer to do if they wanna continue to serve is to have them stay on.
Right.
And, you know, if one of them wants to step down, or both of them wanna step down, there may be two seats available sometime next year. I'm, I'm thinking in terms of waiting till the end of the year, twenty twenty-five, to, to accomplish that, and I've uh I, I think we're still in the process of uh getting something started. And we haven't had uh, compared to the Bodark zoning commission, we don't have much activity.
Yeah. So, um, I was just wondering, that, that, just so I understood. You refer to it like a document, what it says, what's it, is there bylaws or is there a document that defines?
Uh, there are minutes.
Okay.
And that, and not really any bylaws.
Okay.
I don't, would you consider the Lake Comprehensive Plan?
Okay, well, I will take a look at the Lake Comprehensive Plan, and I may have misspoken.
So, it talks about the board formation and um members and how they roll on and off and terms, anything like that in the comprehensive plan?
Di, you've spoken, I, I don't recall, I don't recall seeing.
And I called through in, in the county and I've just tried to, to understand is all, there's no, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, I looked at some minutes that uh were very general.
Okay.
And uh, though, I think there were Commissioner Court meeting minutes, and uh that may take precedent over the comprehensive plan. Uh, all our zoning regulations and comprehensive plan is subject to what the Commissioners Court decide, and the Commissioners Court could wake up tomorrow and decide they don't wanna zone around the lake. You know, there's uh, or they could wake up tomorrow and replace all of us. So, and when I say they, uh, we operate, uh, at least on these issues based on three of the Commissioners Court voting. Uh, one of us can't do it on our own. Uh, the only thing we can't do with three is raise taxes, and to raise taxes, we have to have four. So, uh, that, that's where we are, and we also have to, if we're going above a certain level, we have to put it on the ballot.
Right, I understand. Yeah, thank you. I had looked at all uh minutes for this meeting and didn't see anything, and I didn't see it in the?
Well, I don't think they would be in this meeting.
Exactly.
And I looked at them, and I think Mr. Morris has looked at them also, and uh, he probably has a better idea of what they say than I do because I've been uh, uh in oblivion uh for, for the last two or three days trying to get a bunch of other projects done. I spent this, this uh, you know, part of this morning talking about uh the uh Justice Center and what's going on there, and you listen to a bunch of engineers and architects talk. It's uh confusing to say the least, so I'm, I'm a little muddle-headed.
All right, that gave me a little time. So, membership and terms um is on page fifty-eight of the Lake zoning regulations. The Lake Zoning Commission must consist of a chairman, four additional members. The following membership and terms are established by section twenty-three, uh, two-three-one-point-one-three-six of the Texas Local Government Code. Chairman, A, the Commissioners Court shall appoint the chairman. B, the chairman must be a public official in the county. C, the public official must be either an elected or appointed official holding either a countywide or municipal legislative, administrative, or judicial position. Um, D, the chairman serves a two-year term of office. E, the Commissioners Court shall fill a vacancy in the office of chairman by appointment. Other members, the other members serve four-year terms. In making the initial appointments of the other members, the Commissioners Court shall designate the members for staggered terms of one, two, three, or four years. In the event of a resignation, end of term, or vacancy, the Commissioners Court shall appoint new members. Um, and it goes on to the secretary. Lake Zoning Commission may employ a secretary and acting secretary or other technical clerical personnel.
I think that pretty well answered it, doesn't it? Yep.
Right, thank you.
And that's coming out of the state statute?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the Commissioners Court can't modify that, so, yes, ma'am?
Um, years ago, Jan was on, and there was a thing about too many people on the board or whatever.
Yeah, we, we had appointed something like nine.
Right, and then um uh when Jan was not mayor anymore, and when we had a new mayor, uh, they voted him in, uh, Mr. Morrison, and now we have a new mayor, and the city would like to replace it with someone. Do we have to have uh signatures for that?
No, I think you just have to come forward to Commissioners Court. And the court's gonna decide, that's what it says.
Well, let's, let, you know, here, here's where we are from last Tuesday. We were gonna let Mr. Morris stay into, into January, and uh then uh the Commissioners appoint, I mean, the county, the city's appointee was gonna take over. And I will double-check that to make sure what we did was lawful. I'm a stickler, you know, I'm an attorney and I'm a stickler for following the law, and I, I need to make certain I'm aware of what the law is.
Well, I just wanted to know because uh he's not on the city council or anything, and it's always nice to have a mayor or a city councilman that uh goes to these meetings, knows what goes on, and can tell the people, you know, which we don't have if uh they're not uh elected.
Well, I, I don't disagree with that, and that was part of our logic and the direction we headed Tuesday. But uh, my direction is uh, I'm sort of like a, 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 a wind, you know, a weather vane. If the law changes, my direction changes, and if I've become aware of what the law is and it, I'm out of line, I, I change my mind pretty quickly. I've taken a, an oath of office to uh enforce the law, and I've, as a lawyer, I've always been subject to uh, you know, enforcing the law or living within the law. So, we will take a look at it and make sure we haven't committed a faux pas.
Thank you.
I can't get on the internet to see what was said on Tuesday. I know, it was disgusting, Commissioners Court.
I don't think it was voted on.
Yeah, they just said they were happy with Mr. Morris and kicked it down to this one.
Okay.
I remember it, I was here.
Well, we will take a hard look at it, and again, uh, the, it, the world is interesting when it comes to the law. There are things that are illegal, and you go to jail if you do them, and then there are things that are unlawful, and the unlawful things just don't take effect. Uh, there's no penalty, you just, you know, I can uh issue a decree and it has no effect. So, that's uh, that's what we'll be looking at, and we will get back with a report on where we are. Uh, I want to, I'm big on wanting to comply with the law.
Right. And as a citizen, I would like, you know, someone on the council or something who's here. Mr. Morris doesn't come to all our city council meetings. If we were discussing something and wanted to answer about what's going on here.
Okay, well, here, here's the thing.
It ties our hands.
But you're, you're here at, you're here at these meetings, so you know what's going on.
A lot of this stuff is over my head.
What was that about all these other people?
I, I, I'm not on the city council, I wouldn't have any questions about what's going on.
Why wouldn't you ask these other people? What's going on?
What if they don't go to every meeting?
I'm talking about the people that come to these meetings, and it's usually more people than we've got here tonight.
Tonight's a light meeting, but I'm?
That's like hearsay.
Yeah, what I would, what I would say to you is I buy into your concept. The original thought when this was set up is that, uh, it was set up under Judge Moore that we were going to have, you know, uh, somebody who is on, appointed by the city council of Ladonia on this commission. Now, what I've heard is, is what Di's telling me, and I'm gonna look into it and see if that's correct. Uh, and I'll, I'll be back with you with an answer.
And we've had that, we've had that, first one mayor and then?
No, I don't, I don't disagree with you. That doesn't mean that what we did back then was lawful.
I thought you fixed that when you had to whittle it down. Too many people.
Well, we had, we had too many people.
Right.
So, we, we fixed that. Now that we fix it correctly?
Right.
That's another question. You know, the, the, for me, the law is the law, and that's what I'm bound, I'm bound by, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a look at that probably next, the week after next, I'm busy next week, and we'll come up with some sort of answer that I'd be delighted to share with the city of Ladonia. I've had conversations with the mayor, and we'll figure out where we are.
Some law stuff is like reading a book, interpretation, you know, everyone has different interpretations.
Well, I, I agree with you, and what happens is, if we decide wrongly, it goes to the district court, the district court makes a decision. If they decide wrongly, it goes to the appellate court for the sixth district over here, and if they make a decision, it goes on to the Supreme Court of Texas, and if they make a decision, it's generally binding unless it violates the U.S. Constitution, and then they can go to the Supreme Court, and you will have a decision there, and that takes about two and a half years, but uh?
Going up that many steps on the ladder is ludicrous for a little town like ours.
I don't disagree with you, and it probably wouldn't get much past district court. So, we, we wanna be in compliance with the law, and we want to have Ladonia's participation. But if I can't do that, I'll let you, I'll let you know, and we'll address it some other way. Your, your point that Ladonia should have a say in who sits on this board, you'll find no disagreement with anybody on this? Your, your point that Ladonia should have a say in who sits on this board, you'll find no disagreement with anybody on this committee.
I'm just saying that's how we've done it.
I, I, I agree, but.
They, both these people were.
And, and I, I agree with you, but I'm telling you, the fact you're doing something wrong doesn't make it right. And, uh, I want to make sure we're doing, anything we do is lawful. That's, that's my position on that, and if out of ignorance I do something that's unlawful, and it comes to my attention that it's unlawful, I'm going to correct my course.
Yes, sir.
And I, I appreciate your comments. I'm, uh, you know, I'm a trial attorney who's argued, uh, attorneys argue, so if I seem to be arguing, that's just, uh, how trial attorneys act, and there's no, uh, mal-intent, and, uh, I speak up because I, I'm hard of hearing. And, uh, so I, I guess what I'm telling you is we're gonna, we're gonna do it the right way, and I'll have that figured out probably week after next. And I'll let everybody know, uh, what has to be done.
Excellent.
Very good. Um, let's see, we're going on to agenda item number six. Uh, discussion consideration, actually, since we've already talked about that, we're gonna hold off and let Di figure out with, uh, Mr. Janeway what dates were available so we can have somebody maybe come out here and educate us as to the issue of, uh, package plants and density around the lake. And again, I can see it going one of two ways. Uh, one way is having, uh, package plants with compact neighborhoods with multiple houses in them, and the other is allowing acreage with, uh, water treatment. Uh, you know, you're talking about aerobic systems, and I understand that there's controversy of whether those aerobic systems would cause harm to the drinking water. And we're pledged to maintaining water quality, but what does that mean? Does that mean I get out there with, uh, uh, you know, a purifier every day, the county does to purify the water? Does it mean that I stop people from fertilizing their property to make sure the water quality is there? There's some sort of reasonable a- amount of control that the county should exercise, and you balance that against development and what we're doing to ourselves. There's no simple answer, but we have committed to trying to maintain, or, or being committed to water quality, but that doesn't mean that we blow everything aside. Now, if we wanted water quality, we'd make everybody, uh, evacuate the area around the lake for a hundred miles. You know, there are things that we can do and we can't do, and we're gonna take a look and under, try to understand how important it is, uh, to have package plants rather than aerobic systems.
And with development on our side of the lake, would our city council have input? Uh, what, as a city, we would?
Well, within your city limits, yes. We're not telling you what goes on in the city. You can have, uh, fifty-story buildings, you know, or you can have.
No, I mean about the aerobic versus.
Yes, you have saved, I, I think you could put in your own aerobic system and make everybody in the town use it. You've got a lot, within your territory, within the city limits, you've got authority that the county doesn't have. You can do a lot more zoning than the county can. We have very limited zoning rights, and that's around the buffer zones on both Bodark Lake and Lake Ralph Hall. In the rest of the county, we, there are probably four or five things we can regulate. Uh, it, as far as all this other stuff, uh, we don't, we don't have a say.
Well, I know you were talking about aerobic systems versus sewer systems, and I, I'm thinking you would have the final say on any development we have on our side of the lake?
Not in the city, not in the city.
Everything in the city currently would probably try to hook up to, um, the sewage treatment plant. The way things stand right now, Ladonia does not have an interlocal agreement with the county. So the county cannot, um, permit any OSSFs, which is, you know, the sewage facilities that are individual. We cannot permit that even within your city limits. So anybody that wanted a, um, aerobic septic system right now inside of the city of Ladonia would have to go through TCEQ. And the main difference with that is that TCEQ allows half-acre lots, and our regulations are more stringent, the county only allows one acre lots or more.
For aerobic systems.
Yeah, uh, we'll call it aerobic, they're called onsite sewage facilities. And so right now, anybody that wants a aerobic system within the city limits would actually have to permit through TCEQ. Not the county.
Now, cities are, they have a lot of independence from the county. And, you know, uh, if you want to live in a city, it's, uh, I don't, I, I like being out on the great frontier, but, uh.
With this city so small, it is like country.
But it might not be small for much longer.
Oh, wow, so we don't want any big mess around the lake.
Well, it's, uh, it, nobody wants change, and what we have to do, my, the, uh, mission is to make sure that any change that comes, we have a say in what it looks like, and try to make this place a place, a community we all want to live in. And I'm sure Mr. Janeway feels the same way, and we're all trying to do what's best. Uh, the problem is, uh, it, even though we're well intentioned, uh, intention, we have different ideas about what's best. What I don't like is people who are coming in and exploiting us and have no, uh, care about staying here and return to their million-dollar mansion in, uh, the metroplex and count their, uh, winnings.
Believe me, I know. I grew up in Connecticut on Long Island, and all the New Yorkers bought all the land by the shore, put up big condos and everything else, so.
Well, I, I want what's best for all of us, and, you know, we all have different opinions. It's, do you like pecan pie or peach pie?
Peach. I love pecan pie.
Okay. Well, that being said, I think we've, uh, discussed everything we need to discuss, and I think I'm looking for the big motion.
I like most adjournments.
Okay, we've got a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a second by Commissioner Morris. Uh, let's go ahead and vote, assuming there are no further questions. Uh, Commissioner Magnus, uh, Commissioner Wallace, Commissioner Morris.
Uh.
Chair says yes. Uh, Commissioner Shinpa abstains. We're, we're adjourned, the motion passes.
Six-ten.
Okay, it's six-ten.